My clock is a little bit, oh, here we go. Okay, it's six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting in order if you'd stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, if you would call the board?
Absolutely.
Mayor Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Sins?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Udaley?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rocker?
Here.
Our agenda this evening, I would like to add, make an amendment to it. Under Discussion Items, the Concept Plan Presentation by Fisher Holmes. They are not here this evening, but that is going to be moved to November thirteenth meeting. So just wanted to scratch that from our agenda for this evening. And then I'm adding in leash laws. Mr. Rucker would like to bring up this topic, so I am adding it into the discussion. If there are, are there any further amendments to be added? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Udaley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
And is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from October ninth, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion to approve council minutes from October ninth.
Second.
Mr. Udaley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
All right, moving into our visitor section this evening, we have two visitors. Our first visitor is Ms. Connie Hamilton. If you'd like to take the podium. And we do have a three-minute time limit for our visitors.
I probably wouldn't have three minutes. But I just want to introduce myself. My name is Connie Hamilton. I reside in a big white family. I know it's not Madison, but I feel like it's very similar. As a Madison family, it's rural, very much like we are. And it sounds like you guys have a lot of similar farmland and different things like we do. We share the Darby watershed, which is very nice. But basically why I'm running for state representative, I am a regular citizen, just looking to be a part of the political process. I'm one of those people that is very conservative. I truly believe in values, Christian values, and feel that it is very important to us that we have that. I believe that our children should not be controlled by the school system or the school board. I believe that we as parents should have that right and grandparents should have that right to have those, the say in our children's lives. A really big thing to me is also energy and keeping a very good source of energy for us. That is very important. Some of the things that I get concerned about is having burnouts or blackouts in the state of Ohio. That only happens in California in my mind, so I want to make sure that that's part of what I feel. Some of the things, just to tell you a little bit about me, I did thirty years in the military. I was a military policewoman. I also, because I was a reservist, my husband was on active duty. I traveled many different places, lived very, quite a few places in my life. I've been to Iraq and Afghanistan doing detention ops. I've worked at the Pentagon doing policy. I was a teacher for about five years in South Carolina and North Carolina. I also have done business and currently we are property owners where we have rental properties as well. So I kind of have a business background, teaching, you name it, I'm kind of very well-rounded. So I feel that my policy experience and all of that would be very good with the job as a state representative. So I truly appreciate your support and your company ask for your vote in March, I think, the twenty twenty-four. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Race Robinson?
Should I talk now about the ARPA funds or is there going to be like an interaction since we have an application?
I, probably like now is the time to do it because during the application discussion, I'll just be counsel, so.
Sure. I'll be here for you once I get some relaxation. So you have an application for ARPA funds in front of you. I know that there are some funds that are available. That application is a collaboration between multiple building and business owners in the downtown or uptown, rather, sorry. To really try to, and I know this about the long freaking way down, the facade, plant the facade of the buildings and some of the electric and things that I can sure down there. And all of, all of those buildings are connected. So if we try to remove the one bolt that's currently sticking out of the roof of our building, our new structure, we can't do it unless every other pole subsequently thereafter comes down as well. Ohio Edison after the fact had told us that they can't in fact anchor it to our new building, which we had intended for originaling. And it's obviously blown and tossed up like crazy. But regardless, building owners are collaborating effectively, trying to do our part together to do the right thing for the uptown and clean it up. And I know we inherited some of that when we took over the properties from the village of Plain City. But it also affects the visibility from that parking lot that you just did and some of those other aspects as well. So when you look at the application, it's not just removing, the removing low voltage line that comes across to our property. It hits everything else that goes north of that alley and west across the patio of the granary and into the parking lot, behind Lovejoy Plaza and the rest of that West Main Street block as well. So this is crazy important, just full disclosure, that freaking building is like putting me in the ground. If I'm being completely honest, we're like five hundred thousand dollars over budget. And that's no, that's no BS. So it's, it's happening because, one, we had the deal and that postponed us for quite a bit and rose our costs. When you take plaster off the walls and things like that, you uncover a lot of quote-unquote stuff that you just can't see. We have this south-facing wall that obviously was belonging to one point, it was about a fault. So we're trying to do all of the right things, including collaborating with our other building mates in that block. And so our ask is really just to help give us some grace. We know you have the funds available. It's the play a big part in this. We want to do the right thing and we're willing to bear and split the remaining costs of the removal barrier, our burial and the hiding of those electric lines. And I think that that's really going to be the first step of many to improving the uptown. Frankly, I was going to apply for the rest of the ARPA funds for the clock tower building, but one that didn't really fit. We're willing to absorb the cost that are there on that project to do the right thing there too. So it's a small piece of a bigger puzzle and this would be a huge first step in helping us accomplish, you know? Just cleaning this up and making it more inviting, getting rid of, getting rid of all the chaos, to be completely honest. So hopefully anything else set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Moving into reports for the, since our October ninth meeting, we hosted and I wel, we welcomed local municipalities to the Route Thirty-three corridor meeting that was hosted here in Plain City on Friday, October thirteenth. We listened to a guest speaker who was working with Licking County and helping to navigate the growth that is coming with Intel. He gave great, great ideas for Plain City, Jerome Township, Marysville and Dublin communities to help us better work together for planning. Ms. Lupton and I also met with Congressman Carey's office and discussed infrastructure and grant opportunities that week. My family and I attended the Plain City Library's annual haunted library. They had a great crowd and the weather that evening really helped with the attendance. But want to commend the library for helping to give extra, extra programming for the community. I've been helping with the logistics for the Madison County Community Food Drive Competition. We are in our finishing of tallying the final donations and everything. But I really want to thank Plain City Elementary for collecting quite a few items. The other municipalities haven't put forth their numbers yet, so I don't want to put any numbers officially out there until I have our total. Mrs. Litton's first grade class donated over a thousand items just in their class alone. And then Kanan Middle School also donated quite a few non-perishable items for Plain City Food Pantry and Hope's Lantern. And I want to thank the Plain City Police Department for helping to collect their donations. They, Chief McKee went out and with the trailer and picked all of those up and brought them in.
Not by yourself.
Not by yourself, okay, well, and the police department. And I want to thank our staff and residents who donated as well. So hopefully the, and we had a generous resident donate a check to DNA for eight hundred and thirty dollars. So I will put that out there. So whoever donated that, we really appreciate that your efforts in helping us. I've also been meeting with the school district along with Lieutenant Jaskowitz to discuss our local plans for the solar eclipse that is happening on Monday, April eighth. That is to take place around three fifteen, so if you're familiar with our school district, that is the elementary release time. So we are concerned with the timing of the eclipse and the release time of students, along with the potential number of visitors to the area. They are saying that, well, we're in the path of totality and we may have quite a few people coming here to view the eclipse. We don't know. But our recommendation to the Board of Education would be to allow students the opportunity to be with their families and cancel school for the day. So I did write a letter to, along with Lieutenant Jaskowitz, to give to Dr. Miller and explain our concerns. ODE is pushing the eclipse and all of the education behind it. So we're gearing up for a really great event and hope that it is a nice, clear day. Saturday, I participated in Fall Fest and I want to take this opportunity to thank our Parks and Rec Department, Public Works, Police and Staff for putting on a great event. It is amazing to see how much this event has grown in the past three years and each year it gets better and better. I didn't get a venture out and see everything because it was three hours of panning out candy at my tent. So I apologize to not being able to see everything else. Sunday, I attended the re-grand opening of the Marathon Station in town and assisted with the drawing of their giveaway items that they had. They had a nice crowd participate. And upcoming on November tenth, which Friday, November tenth, is our Veterans Day Ceremony. And the ceremony begins at ten fifteen AM. It's going to be at the high school auxiliary gymnasium so that the band and choir can participate as well and be right on the same campus. So want to thank the school district for allowing us to all come together for, at this location. There will be refreshments beforehand starting at nine thirty for veterans and families. So that, no cake, but maybe cake donuts. But that is all I have for my report and I see Ms. Sonnet is not here this evening, so Chief McKee.
Thanks, Mayor. I attended the Union County made drug task force. As you mentioned, they're pretty busy. I wish they weren't, but they are. I also attended the Union County Corleone Advisory Board meeting to do with our March traumas. Officer Hodgson and Officer Lake attended sexual assault training. It was a week-long course that I think it was given in a pod. Police Department received five thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars in eighty-eight cents for our vest and body armor grant that we applied for. And he's already received the check, so I want to thank, again, Sergeant Howard for his work on that grant. And then lastly, it's gone on ninety days that, since we started the hiring process for the new police officer. And again, we are struggling with obtaining qualified applicants. I think we have three right now, maybe four, that are qualified. Possibly you want to set up interviews with those in probably two weeks. We only need one person. Usually with this, when we start this process, we usually have in Brooklyn fifty to sixty-five people apply. We've only had seven and half of those aren't qualified to be police officers. They're only under certificates. With that, so again, as many of you guys are looking for a job, we're definitely hiring. That, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Lupton, our village administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo your words about the Fall Fest. It was a great turnout, great event. Thanks to everyone who participated and helped make that happen. Painting on Noben Road finished up today, so that project should be totally complete. I'm sure those residents will be happy about. Tonight, we have the first reading of the Uptown Streetscape on the South Side for award. It received two bids. One was favorable, so we're going to have to go ahead and get that started, even though construction probably won't happen until the spring. And then I'd like to congratulate our uptown businesses, or all businesses, I'm sorry, for the decorating contest. The granary won first place, followed by the hairlock for second place in the Halloween category. The harvest category, Richwood Bank came in first and Rummel Brill CAFSI Insurance came in second. Thanks, everyone, for participating.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. I was going to say, our uptown is looking really great with the, all the decorations and definitely noticeable as you're driving through, so thanks to those business owners. Thank you. Council President, Mr. Sins?
We have a planning meeting for our work session is this Friday in the afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Mr. Lafayette?
No report other than working with Ms. Lupton on a few contract issues.
Thank you. Communications and marketing?
Yeah, most notable, we reviewed proposed communication to the village regarding changes to the water and sewer building related to the, the higher water and sewage system.
And Board of Zoning Appeals?
Nothing to report.
Planning and zoning commission, we met on October eighteenth and had discussion with Fisher Holmes and looked at their concept plan and made recommendations to them so that they come back with, when they come to council, they hopefully bring those recommendations that we've made for their concept. Also, you'll see on the agenda this evening, our second readings. And we're setting a zoning hearing for the overlay district. And Beechey Farms was the topic of discussion and passed their rezoning and preliminary development plan. Parks and Recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I just wrote this note down here as people were talking and I, I don't know why I'm pointing this out, but I think I need to point it out that the Parks and Rec Committee is so much fun and I've said that before. We have such interesting discussions and they're, they're all about how to improve and develop parks and recreation facilities in the village. And we have no shortage of really good ideas. And unfortunately, maybe not enough money to implement even twenty percent of them or whatever. But one thing about that committee is it always has full attendance of the committee members. So I'm not sure what difference it's that from, from some of the other committees who struggle to get quorum. But there's probably a story there, some, somewhere that's worth maybe doing a little investigation to find out why there would be a difference like that. I know we have a lot of fun on our committee and it's, it's, well, whatever. We had a really successful, I think the village did, of, of programs for the summer. Music in the Park was over. We had, we had record-breaking attendance for some of our content, our concerts. Farmer's Market, that tells, tells the committee that it was a very successful year for Farmer's Market and we had an extended discussion about ideas and, and staff has some, some good ideas about additions and changes to Farmer's Market for next year to make it even bigger and better as we go forward. So we have a dog park that's in the design and development stage down by the Jackson Water Facility. That is looking up to be really good and have quite a few amenities for village residents to exercise their pets. The Fall Fest, I'll just add my rubber stamp to that event. That was amazing. I got there maybe about five o'clock and there was no place to park to speak of. And cars were still coming in. It was, it was well-attended. And the amazing part about it was, if you, if you remember, Saturday was a very overcast day and there was no guarantee that it wasn't going to rain on you and it had been raining before. So when I do my events in the park, that kind of puts a damper on attendance. But that was a damper on Fall Fest attendance, then we're probably grateful for it because it was, it was like capacity almost. And maybe we can look forward, if it's good weather next year, to a blowout kind of event. And I see the park stracker watching me and she knows what I'm talking about. The, the parking and punishment of people issues can be significant with that. Next one coming up, it's on my radar, is Christmas Under the Clock. Parks Committee had a discussion about that. There are three music agendas coming into Christmas Under the Clock still. You shake your head, Linda, if I'm, things have changed on that. But we have the iconic Dublin Cornet Band. It's going to be there. It's the one that has the long hundred-year history with Plain City. And that's another story for another time. But, and then two choral groups, I think, are going to be there singing carols also. So there'd be plenty of, of music. We have the new lighting in the village, which is going to brighten things up quite a bit, I think. And I, and I believe staff is doing a, a, an extra effort in engaging with the businesses along Main Street to see if we can get all of them open or almost all of them if we can. So thank you, Mayor. That's my report from Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I did forget to advertise Friday, November third is merry on Main for the uptown businesses and that's from five to seven PM. So that made me remind, I wanted to get that out there because we won't be meeting besides work sessions. So I wanted to get that out to council members. Tree Commission, I know Ms. Granger, you had said you had an update for us.
The tree commission actually meets tomorrow night at six thirty here at the, sorry, conference room. So we're going forward with discussion on various trees and appropriateness to development. So everyone's welcome to attend.
Thank you. Personnel and Finance?
Nothing to report.
Fire Board?
We meet Thursday, the second, six thirty at the fire station.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Design Review Board?
We had a meeting last month. We had eight items on the agenda. Turned out we only really had to listen to six because two of them were on private property and so it turned out we didn't have to do that. Thought the meeting went very well, even with, we all talked about the new arrangement that's going to happen with Mr. Hutchinson told us so, his task that he has been given with council, they gave, and I thought it was well-received by the rest of the board that was there. And I don't believe we're meeting in October. Oh, we did. Okay. Because at that meeting, we hadn't had one by that time. Okay, so you are meeting then in October.
Wait, for like this week or next?
No, for November.
Sorry, November, yeah, I was going to say.
For about a day or two.
Yeah, BCA, DRPM.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Udaley. Economic Development Committee?
We meet tomorrow morning at eleven. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Rules Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. A short report here. We continue to keep and add content to the rules and procedures document. And for those who are interested, our next meeting is right after council meeting tonight. So as soon as council meeting will be over, we'll be convening our meeting. Maybe in the conference room, if people hang out here after council meeting, like sometimes happens. We don't want to disturb the networking going on, so we'll see, but right after council meeting.
Thank you. Moving into discussion items, Design Review Board Code Update Timeline. And I'll hand this over to Mr. Hutchinson.
Good evening, everyone. Kind of giving that, maybe where we're at and kind of the, the plan of attack here. So we have, I have completed the draft for an uptown commercial overlay district. And we'll get that out to you as this week starts reviewing. So tonight, we have some on, on the agenda, motions to set public hearing. I'm going to be doing the same for P and Z as well. So November fifteenth, we'll have a public hearing and planning zoning will review that. I want them to be involved in the process too, so. So when you get to review this document, any feedback you can give, shoot it my way. Pass the same from T and Z to any, any questions or concerns to get to us. And the reason why we're doing this now kind of simultaneously is to, is just for timing. So planning zoning, a public hearing will be on the fifteenth. So by setting the public hearing for council, it will happen after the fact. So that's what we're doing now, just to save that extra thirty-day time in a normal way. And then, and we can discuss, so if, you know, depending on the work session, if, if there's enough conversation, maybe we can discuss that work session between, it's up to you, it's up to you on the public hearing. Time it works out, it could be closer to the start of the year, starting to be processed.
You have a draft? When will you be, will you be able to send it out this week?
I'll send it out.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, this is a part of the building code or the zoning code as an overlay version?
It's going to be, it's, so it's going to be an add to the existing zoning code in the special districts. So we have, like, we have the corridor district, we have a wellhead protection district. So it's just going to be overlaid, overlays the.
Within zoning?
Yeah, within zoning, so, chapter thirteen twenty-seven of the building will be.
So we'll remove it from the building code and add it to the zoning code?
Yes.
Is there a reason you do it that way as opposed to keeping it in the building code?
Well, we have, we do have more review capabilities. We have more, ideally, we have more, we have the building department.
Sure.
And, you know, so it, it makes sense to have it in there as a zoning overlay. Most of the uptown district is in B three, they're all, it's already has the current zoning district in it. So the overlay is just going to be what the overlay guidelines design to be set for, the heatbeds or field, those characteristics of what's existing down there today.
In that portion of B three?
Yeah, yeah, so it, it will just become a part of the building, the building inspector can enforce it.
Now, and, and again, I know this is just a discussion, but, so to enforce it, would there have to be a change to a current building?
Yeah, so, well, yeah, so it's going to cover existing buildings and it's going to cover new buildings as well. So it's almost the same process kind of, instead of going to the RV or the major site plan, they'll go planning, zoning for review. And then the minor site plans will come through administration, not in any other commercial district.
So the site plan is what would trigger the overlay district to kick in?
Yes, it's stated in that code that that's what's required for. It lists the actual construction types or changes, it lists in the code and where that falls under, maybe what application. It makes more sense when.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to think about when it triggers to go, so we'll start with a bunch of non-formal ones.
Well, no, not necessarily. It won't start with, because it's not changing anything. It's not changing the zoning district. It's just, it is controlling what it's going to look like moving forward. Which is going to be similar to what it is now. We want to keep that historic, that, that charm, that feel. But it's taking those historic guidelines and restrictions that are.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. ARPA funding application presentation.
We've received two requests for the ARPA funding. Just as a reminder, we have twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-six cents available in non-allocated ARPA funding. We've sent out the application to several local organizations. We posted on our website and on social media. We received two applications. They were both in the packet. We did realize the one from FMC Investments cut off a couple sections, so it's printed out tonight in front of you as well. The first one was from the Plain City Historical Society for an upgraded furnace, air quality equipment at the building that they are currently in. The amount requested was twenty-three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. The second applicant was FMC Investments, the granary. The second applicant was FMC Investments, the granary, making name Pioneer Pizza for the removal of the power poles, the facade cleanup, as Reese Robinson stated earlier. They requested $21,000. Both applications, we believe, meet all ARPA requirements. If approved, applicants will set a grant agreement with the village stating that if they don't use the funds for, as it was intended, or the government comes back and says we misinterpreted anything, that they'll be responsible for those funds. But we do believe that they both qualify. We both, we believe both applicants qualify and that they're both good applications.
So who's responsible if they get rejected by the feds?
The applicant would have to pay back those.
He would have to reimburse the funds. Okay, that's going to be, that would be tricky for them to do. And so you feel like they comply with all of the ARPA regulations and the law in that respect? And so these seem like private investments to me that, that have, I'm having trouble connecting this to the COVID virus, the original purpose of the ARPA funds. So, so how does that work with these private projects? And am I right about that? Would you agree?
The way I understand it, and our expert, and I let the applicants know that we're just interpreting the treasury's guidance as best as possible. The Historical Society is a nonprofit. They believe they had losses due to COVID. And they are also stating that the upgraded furnace leads to better air quality in that building for their membership.
Right. I would, I'm just, I'm not going to ask council to do this or the law director to do this. I would feel a lot more comfortable, given the private nature of these projects and the public nature of the funds and the requirements kind of to be somehow connected to COVID. If the law director vetted these applications against the law and just confirmed that they were, they were compliant with the ARPA regulations. I, I mean, it's, I'm not sure how long that would take to do that. I don't think it should take too long. But, and just from my personal view, I would feel more comfortable if that happened.
Well, I can tell you that I reviewed the ARPA, the Department of the Treasury guidance concerning the dispersment of ARPA funds for private. You know, there's public purposes, private purpose, small business, nonprofits. There's any number of entities that they allow for cash contributions for homeowners, individuals. It's pretty wide open. There are so many vagaries of the rule. It goes on for, you know, just the guidance alone goes on for like 118 pages going through it. And there's just one piece after another of what it can be used for. And I can tell you that the Plain City Historic Society, Historical Society, the ventilation issue, it falls squarely within an approved purpose. The infrastructure improvement, removal of those telephone poles for Mr. Robinson's and their, I guess, FMC Investments, that also falls within an approved use of the ARPA funds. To be quite honest, the federal government did not provide, it's 118 pages worth of guidance that doesn't provide a heck of a lot of guidance. But I can tell you that the general discussion points in all of that guidance basically approves both of these.
Thank you for clarifying that because this has been bothering me ever since I got the applications and started reading them. I do appreciate that. I feel a lot better about them now.
Well, yeah, the ARPA funds just aren't for public things. They were set up for private organizations that needed help because of what happened during COVID.
Because of the COVID.
And I think both these applications.
That's where I was getting hung up with it. I couldn't connect the applications with COVID damage. And honestly, I still can't, but given the law director's advice, you know, I perfectly can see how this could get tangled up in the regulations. And there's a way through that mess, no matter what you want to use the funds for almost. So thank you for doing that.
And I'll tell you just to confirm with you, because I also, you know, from the beginning of this, way back before the three subsequent and the final guidance, final rules on all of this, the use of the ARPA funds, the nexus became more and more tenuous with every rule change that the Department of Treasury issued until the final rule where it's, I'm not going to come out and say that they just want you to get rid of the money, but it sounds almost, I mean, it's almost that tenuous as far as the nexus between COVID and the use of the funds.
Something, you said we have, what's left in the budget that we have for that, 29?
$19,360.
Okay.
The only comment I was going to make too is it says, has this organization received federal or state funding, including CARES Act related to the COVID-19 emergency? And it's checked no, but there's four entities in this together. And two of them did get PPP money from the CARES Act. I wouldn't have any way to check the other two, but.
I think you can check online. I did have, I did not check that.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Dawson. The Granary and Pioneer Pizza did receive.
That was part of the application process that we'll assume was an oversight. Is it disqualifying in the ARPA application or disqualifying by the law or just something we wanted to know?
I think we just wanted to know, I think.
Yeah, it's not disqualifying. It's just a matter of whether any funds had to be paid back and weren't paid back. It's almost like a lien check to make sure that you didn't borrow money and then didn't use the CARES Act funds appropriately and then didn't pay those back and then so on.
So how much was the one for the Historical Society?
They're both like 21.
I'm sorry.
They're both like 21.
Oh, they're both 21?
If you divided, Historical Society was 23. If you divided the total ARPA balance between the two entities, it would be $14,680.
Yeah, and the only problem with that, based on the applications, is that, because I, obviously, in fairness, right, the split evenly, they're both valid. Applications jumped out, right? The only problem with that is based on the application from the Historical Society, based on their operating budgets, they wouldn't be able, like, we would give them not enough money to do the project and then they just wouldn't do the project. Where I, you know, the other entities, I, I think they would probably be happy with it and fair. It's just something to note, I think maybe a conversation with them of, hey, if we gave you 14, would you just say, well, I can't do anything because I need 23? Or, because I don't want to give them money that they can't really use. Because based on their, I think their operating budget was only like five grand for a year. So if they spent their entire operating budget, they wouldn't be able to do it. And if that's the case, I don't want to give them money that just puts them in a weird spot of, well, now I got to find a place to spend it other than this and violate the application. So I, I don't want to delay, especially the other project seems to, based on their application, the timing, yeah, the timing and the weather and everything, they want, they would prefer it happen now. I just, I feel as if a conversation with, I just feel weird granting Historical Society money and then them coming back and being like, well, thanks, but like, I have a cat and you gave me dog food. Like, you know, I can't do anything with this.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Terry. I hadn't gotten into the details with the Historical Society at all. But what I'm going to propose as a, as a possibility is that we give the Historical Society the entire amount, which would reduce the FMC contribution by, by what, half? They would get maybe.
6,000.
6, 7. However, this project that they have listed is always been on the table for a potential village project. So give some thought to a commitment to budget the difference between what they get and the $21,000 in infrastructure spending in our 2024 budget, which would, and I can justify that in my head. I mean, because that's one thing I've been after since 2020, is to get some of the wires and electricity stuff taken care of. It's, it's maybe abomination, it's a strong, too strong a word, but it's, it's a, it's a black sphere in the uptown area. So I would commit to doing that infrastructure makeup in the 2024 budget to make it all. We get, we get, we get part of it paid for by FMC, which is a good thing.
One of my concerns with this, they lease their space, correct, from the building owner? And so I'm a little concerned about how the, how the funds are, why they are paying specifically for furnace.
We believe it is allowed under ARPA. As long as the building owner is okay with it, they can make building improvements. But it is, yeah, it's not, they could be.
I think to Mr. Set's point though, and again, maybe these are questions that we still have to vet out is, usually the responsibility of that would actually be on the building owner, not on the letsee.
Right.
Meaning that the application is not actually the Historical Society as opposed to the building owner. Again, not to say that it doesn't have merit being the building owner to try and approve the Historical Society, just who is the applicant in that case?
It doesn't matter under ARPA.
But when we look at it differently, because it's a, because it's the Historical Society, they are nonprofit.
Sure.
Compared to a building owner, who would be the one that's usually in charge of repairing or replacing that?
Who's also the contractor?
Yes, who's also the contractor?
I don't know if that's true anymore.
Oh, he did sell it then.
Yeah, building owner does not.
That's where the invoice or at least the estimate came from, but he sold that business.
He sold that business.
He's a little less murky.
So let me, let me, let me see if this idea is just dead on arrival. To give the Historical Society $21,000 to give FMC the difference and then to budget infrastructure spending in 2024 for that project that they're doing to make it up the $21,000 that they applied for. So is there, if you could speak to that question, if you favor it or don't favor it, then we could maybe move on to another proposal. I think that's the most fair one. The village, FMC gets it with government money paying for half of it. We get it for other people paying for three-fourths of it. A really important project for the uptown, and I think we should not pass this up, this opportunity. So for what it's worth, but I, I'm interested in your comments.
So, Afiya, how would that work with the lines that you guys are looking to replace or repair or remove or on private right-of-way, not on the public right-of-way, am I right? How would we work that with public money and private money together with, that could be worked out? What Mr. Reed's talking about is trying to do that together. I just think that there might be a hiccup there somewhere.
If it's, it's, well, it was formerly public right-of-way.
Okay. I just didn't know where the polls were.
Utilities still have a right-of-way today, though.
Yes. Oh, it is.
Does, does the work involve anything in public right-of-way?
It does on the north side of Pioneer Pizza, where they have to replace and redo a hole. Up there also is with the line that comes from the south side of Main Street across to the north side. And attaches to that hole that's in our structure currently in most of the village. And that hole can't go by itself because it affects the tension for all of the rest of that.
Okay, I'm just going to guess that that work by itself would be done most of $7,000 in work. I mean, if it doesn't, then we could limit our commitment to the cost of that part of it. But, you know, whatever council thinks is best here.
I love, I love the idea of removing some of these power lines that are downtown. Some of the downtowns that I drive through the state and you see that they're quaint and inviting, there is no utility lines on the front line, on the front of the properties or in the back of the properties or they're buried. And it makes it a nice clean look. And I think our downtown would pop even more with all those utility lines that are there. So I love the effort you're trying to go through. Is there a way that we could work this out so that we can help both groups that are at this application?
And ourselves at the same time.
My, my, my only problem, I don't disagree with you at all that it's a valid project, is the slippery slope that we're starting by opening up our budget for one-off projects. Like, I could see just the next building over at Mr. Troyer's building, the, we must damn, well, we will damn say, oh, I'll look a lot better if you guys give me, you know, 10 grand. And it was a part of the whole reason the ARPA fund conversation was a struggle from the very beginning of, okay, how is Mr. Troyer's building not just as much of a need or blight as the power lines or as the Historical Society? It's a slippery slope and this is why, from the very beginning, I was always trying to keep the ARPA funds in the village. I, I, I don't, we agreed to go forward with this. We agreed to open up these ARPA funds to organizations in need. I think expanding beyond the ARPA funds, while it has merit, it's just like, it'll never stop. And that's just not what I'm, I, I, I just have trouble, I have trouble opening up public coffers and using financial resources.
Mr. Terry, and I completely agree that that's a point that needs to be decided. And it's, it's a bigger picture item than that even because a lot of communities, especially the ones who value their historic district and market it and attract tourism with it, have made investments in their uptown historic district in a public-private partnership to make it good, make it good for business, make it good for residents, make it good for everybody. Now, we're not there, okay, and we haven't been.
Hold on, we are there. That is what the streetscapes are. That you are describing, you're describing what we've been doing and what we haven't did in front of us.
So, let me, I want to jump in real quick. It's not a new comp, it's not a novel concept.
I want to jump in real quick. So the, there is a public part of these, and that's the utility lines that are going across the street that aren't just a blighted building, but they are a piece of the infrastructure that's, that's crossing the road that is, that could easily, in any argument, be very clearly described as something the village could take care of. So I don't disagree that maybe it's, it's something to look into that doesn't, in my opinion, would not open up a slippery slope. Maybe related to other things that are very public in, in nature like that. But just from, from blight, no. And from, oh, I want my building improved because you said they could improve. I don't see this as improving a building. I see this as fixing the streetscape, which we're already talking about doing and we're already doing with public funds.
So I guess, I guess, and then, real quick, does staff have a recommendation?
No, we just put up together the numbers, if you divided it 50/50.
What is your suggestion?
Yeah, my suggestion is we need to find out about the Historical Society and find out if a partial is just going to do exactly what Mr. Terry said and not allow them to move forward. And then they're going to have money that they can't do anything with. So we need to find, we need to get an answer to that question. And then if they can't move forward and they need all of that money, then I would consider entertaining what Mr. Reed brought up about, is there a way to still do that? Put that in with other, put a rather, streetscape projects. Maybe it doesn't happen right now, but it gets it put in as, as part of that bigger picture. There's two things that you could just let me throw in on the, there's not a problem with what Mr. Reed is proposing as far as it's a, it's a general, I mean, it's a, a public benefit for removal of the power lines. But again, it is a slippery slope, so you'd probably want to establish a policy, even if you were to say, okay, we've got to, we're going to create this overlay district. And within this overlay district, within the main streets, we are going to add to the streetscape projects or whatever in the future and cause Haley to have gray hair.
Well, we've talked about a facade improvement program, that would follow perfectly with this.
Yeah, so like, just so long as we can dovetail it, so it's not like, you know, this is really good what's happening, but we're just going to cut it off here and we'll deal with the rest later because the other owners are going to be like, well, you know, what about us? So, so long as there's a policy going forward, I think that's a good idea. And coming up and kind of coming up with a game plan on how to manage it. You know, it may not be this year, it may not be next. And coming up and kind of coming up with a game plan on how to manage it, you know, it may not be this year, it may not be next year or whenever. But a a project where we're gonna start picking away at it, if that's council's desire. And then I forgot the second part of it. There were two things I was gonna say. Oh, the funding restrictions. There are funding restrictions on what how this ARPA funds could be used. So it would have to be cut off at a certain point for the purposes of their project has to be. Be, you know, their business had to be in existence prior to a certain date. The project has to be completed by a certain date for the use of the funds.
If we if we did the inverse of this, would that be impossible? So if we granted the fifty percent to. The other project, the power line project and hold it off on the, just for speed and things. And held off on the historical society, would we be able to justify making up the difference to the historical society? Or because it's not a public utility, we really can only do it one way, which just begs the question.
That would be more problematic.
Yeah, I I think that's.
You don't have a path there, I don't think, you know, from government to private. Unless we did it under community support funds, which authorize that kind of thing, but we limited in how much. We budget for that.
I think that would open a deal to a lot more businesses coming to us saying, I need help with mine. It's it's.
Part of the reason the question was posed. I will motion to table these applications to the work session.
This is like, I would say is something we can.
I'm gonna motion, I will motion, like I said, I will motion to table these applications to the work session.
Is that a second, John?
Yeah, I will second if you.
Michael moved to table the motions.
I would second.
Oh, John seconded.
I think we all want to.
We all want to.
We're all agreeing.
And that will be the first week in November.
It's not, and I know it's not perfect for the applicants, like, remember, first, obviously, they would prefer tonight, but.
It's not November first, it's November, it's November eighth.
Oh, wait.
November eighth is the first Wednesday.
No, November first, so.
The way the way weeks work.
I knew that, because I have a planning meeting coming.
I'm a spelling genius, I'm also a math genius.
And and I do, for both this and the society and the other applicant, I do know that delay and that is not great. But answering these questions and making sure that we do this the right way, I think.
And we can come up with a plan.
It's eight days.
And we should be able to answer something by then, we hope.
Mr. Dryer, would you take the role?
Mr. Seid.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Udel.
Yes.
Ms. Bergerson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Thank you. Sarah motioned to set the public hearing for the amendment as a codified ordinance's comprehensive amendment.
We were actually in the middle of discussion, sorry. I just jumped on to get rid of them. I think we still have to talk about the budget review.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm down here, okay, my goodness, sorry.
I just wanted to get it out of the way, so in the conversation.
Twenty twenty four budget review and finalization presentation.
If you could find fifteen thousand dollars. That's your goal, just put it out there.
Justin, here's some bad news for you.
All right, I'm not gonna take too much time tonight. We're still not doing the readings, but I just wanted to continue on the presentation from two weeks ago about the twenty twenty four budget. And help you visualize it a little bit more. We've got several priorities, including eliminating the B and E fund, removing just expenditures to each account's capital budget. The water operating, the sewer and operating capital will become zero due to the transition to the Mid Ohio District. We recently passed the general fund reserve policy, so we'll be implementing that, making sure that if we need to move money to that account, we do so. We're looking to see if we can start putting some parkland acquisition money aside either in the general fund or in park capital. Just in case future opportunities present themselves. We're working on a formal C I Q plan. Staff had to submit their request formally, getting that into a more organized framework. It won't be perfect for this year, but the framework should be in place to start voting out that five year plan by the end of the year. Staffing highlights, we're gonna wait and see on maintenance workers due to the elimination of the water and sewer funds. We'll have the additional police officer, hopefully we can get that person started and that salary will be in there for the entire year. And then we have budgeted a three percent increase for all staff. It'll be based on a merit increase. Budget timeline update, we met with staff, we met with mayor and council, personnel finance. We are now into the finalizing budget and presentation steps. Hopefully, we'll have the readings of the ordinance in the passage in late November, early December if needed. I would like to, as just to remind you, we'll pass the budget before the end of the year appropriating everything for January. And then by March of next year, we'll pass probably a second budget, updating all the account balances with their actual balances from this year. And just truing up everything, getting that so we can get that to the stake. Revenue, data economy covered sixteen weeks ago with our general fund policy balance. But just a reminder, we're, we continue to spend conservatively and our revenue continues to increase. Our expenditures continue to increase as well, but we try to just make sure that that general fund balance stays in healthy ways we're comfortable for every day. So some of the goals that the budget seeks to align with, yeah, I was just gonna go through these really quickly because we talked about them and we'll continue to talk about them. We recently completed a G I S map of the village sidewalks with one point three miles of sidewalks in county. Circled in blue are the projects that are slated to happen in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, completing the West Avenue and Forty Two intersection. As funded by ODIP, the crosswalks, extension of sidewalks, safe pedestrian access. The just to the east of that is the West Avenue Culver extension. Still searching for some grant funding for that, but we had a budget of just in case. And then across the Kendrick Park, where some, the light up signage and the roof installing across work. So you can cross the street easily into that part. Justin's working hard on the finalizing the Safe Routs school plan. It's to the elementary school in Flakes for their review after that. And that will open it up for some grant opportunities hopefully next year as well. And some of these projects will fit very well over that program. We continue to prioritize our public spaces. This is what we hear over and over from residents. They love our uptown district. They just wish it was a little easier to walk around or there are more things to do. So we're hoping to just continue that investment. The streetscape, the southeast corner, and like I said, the first reading to the ward is tonight, the second reading will be on November thirteen, I believe. So we expect that construction to be, don't wanna really start anything this fall, so that should be next year. We'll look into engineering for an expanded by continual park, taking all the business owners into account for that project. And some other public spaces, this is just from our uptown master plan, so it's not exactly what we're doing next year, but just an idea of how we keep that plan in mind. Roadway improvements, we've recently completed a full roadway inventory of everything in the village. The goal is to ensure pavement maintenance while roadway is in good or fair condition to extend the life of pavement at a lower cost. Instead of waiting till everything we've totally ripped out repaired, which is very expensive. The goal is to keep that investment high in the the ceiling and repaving and crash dealing and the maintenance. To ensure that most of our roads stay in that green or blue category. So this is very hard, I think I distributed this, it's very interesting to. We continue planning, doing our due diligence. We have a lot going on in the area, a lot of partners to work with, a lot of land that is changing uses. So we're making sure that as we go forward, we're looking at connectivity transportation plan. Ohio State School is of architecture, is gonna help us with the plan in the spring at no cost to us. We're also looking at a Darby Township and placing land use updates to make sure we're good partners with our township neighbors. And then continuing our conservation planning and identifying good green space opportunities when we can along the Darby. Lastly, you know, people live in Plain City because it's safe. It's a great place to live and work, a lot to do. Our police department is second to none, so we continue to prioritize fully staffing the police department. Making sure that they are included in the merit raises. To ensure high quality acquired service, we are looking at updating the original rates, doing a feasibility study for possible expansion. Continuing to invest in our public events. They're not cheap, but we see, you know, tenfold when the whole community is out at one time. It makes Plain City a great place to live. Continue to invest in our uptown district. We are proposing, we continue to offer that community grant support because those events, even if not hosted by us, are very important. Street capital projects, we'll see that investment in road paving programs. If we can't find grant funding, we'll prioritize Culver extension to get safe access across that Culver Hill West Avenue. Gateway signage and partnerships in county. We're getting a pretty good price on that for uptown gateway. I think it's legal park, and then looking at storm super planning and upgrading Commerce and Shepherd where a lot of the storm super infrastructure is lacking. Park capital, even though our park capital doesn't have as much money allocated to it. Next year, we are finishing up a lot of projects with high dollar amounts from this year, including the build out of the dog park. Investing in the new Madison Meadows Park. Minor maintenance and improvements on existing buildings, doing that feasibility study and always working with our partners of the P C A V A on improvements around the ball fields. Staffing, covered the organizational investment a few weeks ago. We're gonna maintain the current staffing levels until the district transition is complete. We have completed the move from the utility clerk to becoming an officer assistant. As recommended by organizational assessment, maybe this time next year, we look at that addition of the finance clerk. And then eventually looking at engineering department and looking at police staffing as our housework continues to grow. That's everything, a quick, but just reiterating everything from a couple of weeks ago. I'll be back in two weeks to get into the finer details, but continue to review, let me ask you a question.
So P N F had two open questions when we kind of passed it. One was on the potential total cost of adding a shifter differential for the police. And I believe the second was on investment, on how much would we be investing in past time park without kind of knowing? Like with the future or the pool and everything else. I guess two part question. One, do we have those answers? And two, do you plan? Have you and Michelle discussed like having a November meeting to kind of talk through those with the P N F? Or do you want to bring those directly here?
For shift differential, we did some math. It wasn't anything, it could be absorbed into the current.
So it's included in the budget, thank you.
So I did four parks, I did that across some of the, like the South Shelter room that we talked about. From the version that went to P N F.
Okay.
And I'm just holding that money and making sure we do that feasibility study first thing next year. And then if P N F wanted to have a meeting, I'd be.
If those are the only two changes, I don't think P N F, I I think that what we should be striving for is, you know, if P N F passes something, if it material changes. You probably should go back to them.
Yeah.
But those two items are, those are the only two items that really we are discussing. And and I think that was the sentiment of the group. We just wanted to understand it, so I that's really, I was just, those are the only two open from that meeting, so.
Yeah, there are some minor things that we found out, reviews are, you know, as we get some past proposals, we adjust, but nothing.
Nothing material, okay, thank you.
On the Culver extension and some of those other projects, have we have we looked at O P W C and going after that? Because I know, I think the last time we did that was probably Church Street, I think.
No, we rode out of.
Oh, no, oh, I didn't realize Noeman was that, so yeah, that kicks us to the bottom of the list.
We're a guy, we're doing self scoring for the small government part of the.
I figured there were, I figured it was on it, but it's, it was just something I didn't know Noeman was, got, that kicks us to the bottom of the list then at this point, so.
But it would be a perfect Safe Routs school, and I'm not sure.
No, I I think it would because that gives a perfect conduit right to the, that's the one extension, it's right in my backyard, basically. That doesn't have something that takes you to that point. That would be, are you guys looking on the south side, the west avenue, is that what we're looking at? I think that'd be, I was looking at that Culver. I think when you went out that one time, I looked at it the same day and yeah, to the north would be impossible to extend that.
Thank you, Ms. Left.
Yeah, please. Go for your stop by the office if you can call.
And our last discussion, I didn't leash laws, Mr. Rocker brought this up.
Well, it it's not so much, it's just basically dog containment laws. This afternoon, for the second time in about four months, I had to fight a dog to get a animal out of its mouth. Had a pit bull attacked, a pit bull running loose attacked a guy's beagle. He was walking the beagle. On the sidewalk up front, just got loose and just ran down, and neither, five, took five of us to get this dog off, get this separated. My understanding, this wasn't the first time this dog's been out. And and I think right now, correct me if I'm wrong, basically they just issue a citation and let the dog warden know, correct? If the dog, if the dog, yeah, if the dog gets out.
What's that?
If the dog gets out, they just, they're issued a citation. What's the penalty of, what is that citation?
The first one, I think, is a minor misdemeanor, or second one is a misdemeanor or the fourth degree, so they go to court, I mean, it's general, I think it was a general. I think then after that, it may go to a misdemeanor the first degree, it's no more than that.
One, also, you have the vicious dog statute dealing with, I think if it's a second offense, it'll be your dog is to be put down.
Right. Well, that's why, my understanding, the the first one, there was no report made, so this is only the first time it's happened. But I, yeah, and but the fact is, the dog has been out before, and I I don't know, I I just wonder what, if there's a way to. Beef up our statutes or beef up our ordinances to maybe, maybe, make, maybe make make owners more responsible. Because because and and then this afternoon, after that happened, less than an hour later, I'm I'm out on the front porch, and there's another dog running loose. In in the neighbor's yard. It it's, you know, just a, looked like a shepherd mix.
Yeah, I I know that we made changes to our leash laws.
Yeah, we have a leash law.
Seven years ago.
Animals running the lurch.
Right.
Let's just dog run the lurch.
Right, okay.
I mean, the biggest thing is.
Well, and I mean, is there, is there, what sort of responsibility does the owner have when their animal causes? Harm or injury to either another person or another animal?
It's it's statutory, it's per se liability. So I mean, if you have a dog and your dog are responsible for biting and injuring somebody else, there's a real short list of things to get you out of being responsible for that dog. One would be if the person is antagonizing the dog. Or two, if the dog, if you were on the dog's property, if you were on the owner's property.
Okay.
Those are, and and you'd have to be trespassing, so there's really only two exceptions. Other than that, you're fully responsible, civil liability, criminal liability for your animal.
I I just, I guess my thing is, it it almost seems like, if it happens once, it's an accident. If the dog gets out a second time, maybe that person shouldn't have that dog. I don't know if there's a way to write that into an ordinance that that the that the dog, that the dog have to surrender the animal if they can't keep it contained?
It's really largely dependent on people reporting it, because like you said, somebody said it's been out before, it's done this before. Well, if somebody reported before, this would be the second instance, and now we get much more like responsible. So people just have to report it. People have been fighting this problem for centuries of, you know, loose dogs doing damage to other people. By accident or just carelessness or whatever. There's not probably a perfect solution to it. You're gonna continue to have loose dogs and you're gonna continue to get dog bites. There's no way to preempt it that I know of unless law enforcement can be creative with that. I mean, the first bite, we should be checking tags and stuff like that to make sure they got their vaccinations. Or, you know, anytime you have an opportunity in front of property illegally about some issue, we should be checking license and vaccinations for that dog. And if that's not in place as it should be, then there should be a consequence for that.
Well, that's my issue. You can't blame a dog, you can't blame a dog for being a dog.
No, you can't.
I mean, it it's it's unfair to blame a dog for being a dog.
Right.
But but the people, the people that aren't.
The owner is responsible for the vaccinations and the license. That's the good part.
So the moral is call the police.
Yes. Yes, they can't do anything unless it's reported.
Okay, thank you.
We usually turn it over to the county dog warden, and then they make sure that they have their license, make sure that they have their, that's what they're doing.
Thank you.
Some counties, I know union counties have a rule, like, if it was a pit bull, they had that carry a million dollar policy on that dog, this is Madison County, I don't know that.
I don't think they're, yeah, but I also found it interesting that, uh, apparently for R C, you are not, you can use deadly force to protect yourself from a dog attacking a person or livestock or domestic animals, not including dogs and cats. So, so if, if he, if he's attacking your sheep in your backyard, you can use deadly force, but if you, if you're walking your dog, or your chick, well, yeah.
It's not like my kid's dog, if I take a chance, it's, it's safe.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rucker.
Because we were extremely limited in the means that we could use to, I mean, it's like, you, give me a, it's, you can't, you can't do that.
Um, okay, so now we can move into our motions.
Definitely.
You're fine, yes, I. Motion to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances comprehensive amendments to chapter thirteen twenty seven, Uptown Plain City Historic District for November twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three.
And also keep in mind incumbent in that is going to be the removal of the other section, it's all part and parcel, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it almost, it almost made two motions, one, this will be amending chapter thirteen twenty seven, which is building code, and then amending section chap, chapter eleven eighty five, which would be the overlay district.
Does the building code? Does the building code?
The building code does not need code. Well, it, it's amended, it's a code amendment ordinance, so it does, but it doesn't have to be paid in thirty, but it's.
Can we make that motion, can we make that motion this evening, or do the.
Yeah, I, no, I think you can do it this evening, it, it's, it's, really can't have one without the other.
Okay.
You'd have a conflict in the law if you did that.
So the wording needs to be to set the public hearing for the removal of eleven eighty five? Is that what you, or no, the addition.
I'd say amendment to the building code and to.
Removing is still pending in that chapter thirty twenty seven, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
So it would be, yeah, so that'd be the first one, the, the second motion would be approved again.
An amendment to the building code would be the second one, right, Ms. Ferguson?
Eleven eighty three and thirteen, amendment to both code sections, you do it one ordinance, I think, but.
I mean, we have, we have to call it the sections, do we?
Do we need to do them separate or do we do it?
You can do both together.
All right, let me get the wording down here, so, uh, to set the public hearing for the amendment of the codified ordinances comprehensive amendments to chapter thirteen twenty seven.
And chapter thirteen, or eleven eighty three.
Eleven eighty five.
Or eleven eighty five.
And eleven eighty five for, um, Uptown Plain City Historic District for November twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three. Mr. Dryer, you have that written down, correct, okay, is there a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
No.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
And, um, the next motion is really to set us up for our December meeting schedule, because if you notice, the second meeting for December is December twenty fifth, and I don't think anybody wants to be here on Christmas. So, um, proposing, proposing the, um, December sixth and eleventh, so we have December sixth is, is the work session, but could be our first reading for December and then using December eleventh as our second meeting. Does anybody have any concerns over those dates?
Well, so the sixth and the eleventh are scheduled, right?
Yeah.
So all you're doing is cancel the twenty fifth?
Yes.
I mean, I have no problem canceling the twenty fifth, and hopefully we won't have to, I mean, we can always schedule a mission, I don't know if we need one, that week of the eighteen, yeah. Um, I mean, I can't have a time the eleventh, but that has nothing to do with this, um, because that means it's on the schedule, so if, if your question is, am I okay with canceling on Christmas, yeah, I think that's fine.
The second, so, um, is there a motion to cancel?
So.
Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
All right. Um, moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty three, approving an amendment of the codified ordinances, chapter eleven oh five, definitions of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty three.
Second.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance twenty nine dash twenty twenty three, approving amendment of the codified ordinances, addition of chapter eleven eighty one, plan unit development and the removal of chapters eleven seventy seven, eleven seventy eight, eleven seventy nine, and eleven eighty of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty three.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty three, rezoning at three point two six acres at zero U S forty two, parcel number zero four dash zero zero eight one five, from Community Business District B two to Plan Unit Development.
Motion to approve ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty three.
Second.
Mr. Rocker.
No.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance thirty one dash twenty twenty three, rezoning at four point eight nine acres at zero U S forty two, parcel number zero four dash zero zero five zero three dot zero zero two, from Restricted Industrial District I one to Community Business District B two.
Motion to approve ordinance thirty one twenty twenty three.
Second.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Moving into new business, first reading resolution thirty dash twenty twenty three, authorizing the village administrator to award the contract for the Plain City Uptown Streetscape Project, Phase Three to J and J Schlegel Incorporated. And that.
Need to waive or anything on this?
I don't think we need to waive anything, no.
They said they didn't want to start until spring, all right.
And that concludes our bus, our public business portion of the meeting, we will not be coming back with any, um, update, correct, Ms. Lefton? Okay, we are about to move into executive session pursuant to Ohio Rebs Code, section one twenty one dot two two G two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Ms. Udaley.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
And Mr. Rocker.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
All right, we, we'll be staying in this room. So thank you all for attending the public portion.